Bonjour.
Bonjour tout le monde.
On est prêt à commencer. Alors, je suis Alexandra Depokomandi. Je suis médecin chercheur à l'Université McGill. I'm Alexandra Depokomandi, Clinical Scientist at McGill University.
Moi, c'est Hugo Lema, je suis médecin chercheur, virologue, basé à l'université d'Ottawa. I'm a clinician and a virologist based in Ottawa.
So we want to welcome you today and thanks for being here on the early Sunday rainy. We recognize, so we appreciate your presence. So today is the special session on HIV and cardiomecabolic complications. So you will hear four speakers and maybe we can start now.
Yes.
With the first speaker. So let's welcome Giada Sebastiani, hepatologist at the McGill University Health Center. She's going to present on steatosis in HIV and risk factors, including antiretrovirals and sex difference.
Merci beaucoup pour la gentille présentation. Bonjour. Alors moi, je vais faire ma présentation en anglais, mais je peux prendre mes questions en anglais, en française avec plaisir. Je voudrais remercier le Dr. Wachon et le Dr. Poulin pour la gentille invitation. C'est vraiment un très grand honneur pour moi de présenter à Car. So as Alexandra said, my lecture is on steatosis in people with HIV. And this is, these are my disclosures. And I am panelist at the European AIDS Clinical Society Guidelines. So I will present some of these data and part of these slides are developed by myself as a part of a clinical care options program in HIV and fatty liver. So we start with the definition of non-alcoholic fatty liver disease. Fatty liver disease is the presence of steatotic hepatocytes involving more than 5% of the liver. Under the term of NAFLD, there are two different clinical entities which are NAFL and NASH. NAFL is defined as simple steatosis, while NASH is considered a volatile counterpart of this, of this condition, because it also encompasses inflammation, ballooning and necroinflammation, which eventually will lead to progression of the disease to liver fibrosis and cirrhosis. And we will see that the main risk factors for this condition are metabolic conditions. Why we speak about NAFLD in people with HIV? Because if you see here viral hepatitis and presumed NAFLD among Medicare beneficiaries with HIV, you see that the prevalence of HCV and of HBV-related liver diseases are declining in people with HIV. However, NAFLD-related liver disease is actually increasing and will continue to increase. NAFLD is not only more prevalent in people with HIV, but it's also more severe. If we compare the prevalence to the general population, or you see here in Canada, in the Canadian general population, it is estimated that about 25% of adults have non-alcoholic fatty liver disease. And if you translate these numbers to people with HIV, you see that all the stages of NAFLD are actually more frequent in people living with HIV, including NAFL, including NASH, which is supposed to have a prevalence at least double than the general population, and also liver cirrhosis, which is the end stage phase of the natural history of NAFLD. NASH is also the most common liver disease which account for chronic elevation of liver transaminases in people with HIV. In your clinical practice, you know very well that chronic elevation of liver transaminases in people mono-infected with HIV are actually very common finding. And about 15 to 20% of people living with HIV mono-infection have chronic elevation of liver transaminases. And if you go and look histologically what happened to these patients, there are several studies which looked at liver biopsies in people with HIV mono-infection in terms of which was the underlying liver condition of this elevation. And up to 60% of people with HIV, with HIV mono-infection can have NASH histologically when you find clinically that they have chronic elevation of liver transaminases. So really, it's the most frequent histologic abnormality of the liver in people with HIV mono-infection. Why it is so? Why people with HIV have more prevalent and more severe disease when they have NAFLD and NASH? First of all, the universal risk factors that account for the natural history of the disease are more frequent in people with HIV. We know that metabolic factors such as obesity, type 2 diabetes and dyslipidemia are more frequent. And on top of that, people with HIV have actually unique risk factors for the condition, for NASH, which include prolonged use of antiretrovirals. This can actually cause several conditions at the liver level which will eventually lead to fatty liver and to fibrosis. And also HIV direct effects. We know, for example, that HIV infects the hepatocytes, can also act on kupfer cells, on hepatic stellate cells, and also through chronic inflammation, which can lead to aggravation of non-alcoholic fatty liver disease. I also would like to, to mention to the audience that the term non-alcoholic fatty liver disease is actually, there is an international movement that is actually trying to change this word in NAFLD to MAFLD, which means metabolic dysfunction-associated fatty liver disease. The reason why we are trying at the international level to change the name of the condition is that NAFLD is a diagnosis of exclusion, non-alcoholic, which is not very easy even for the patient to understand, while MAFLD would actually put the accent on the real risk factors with the condition, which are metabolic risk factors, including, as we said, diabetes and obesity. So we are not there yet, the name has not been changed yet, but there is a lot of study and research and an international movement that we are trying to achieve that. Which would be the implications for people with HIV of this change? Well, because both hepatitis C and hepatitis B and also alcohol intake are more frequent in people with HIV, actually, we may see a further increase in the prevalence of the disease in people with HIV once the nomenclature is changed from NAFLD to MAFLD. So we move to one of really of the unique risk factors for NAFLD in people with HIV, which is the use of antiretrovirals. We know that some of the antiretrovirals can cause specific effects on the liver. For example, we know that the drugs can cause mitochondrial toxicity, but also we know that ritonavir boosted PIs can cause metabolic alteration, like dyslipidemia, for example, which will eventually be part of the, of the, of the pathogenesis of NASH. And also INSTE, in recent, more recent years, have been found to be possibly associated with weight gain, as you can see in, in the studies, which different, which different types of, also INSTE causing different levels of weight gain. But it's very interesting, this last observation, more recent observation, the fact that INSTE may cause weight gain. There are not been many research until now on the effect of INSTE and of specific antiretroviral classes on the, on NASH and on NAFLD. This is a study from the group of Professor Jürgen Roostro, where they actually looked at the effect of INSTE and TAF on hepatic steatosis in people with HIV mono-infection. And they found in this study of 300 patients, longitudinal study, that both INSTE and TAF were associated with kind of more steatosis progression compared to other antiretroviral regimens. This is obviously only one study and because of that, we actually looked at other literature. This is another small study from the Spanish team of Dr. Macias, where they actually conducted a randomized control trial in HIV and HCV-coinfected patients. And they found that those who were switched from avifaviren-based ART to raltegravi-based ART, they had more resolution of hepatic steatosis during a period of one year. We also looked in our, in our cohort, in the study of Canada and Italy, at the effect of, of possible effect of antiretroviral regimens on liver fibrosis progression in people with HIV and MAFLD. And in our study, actually of over 1,000 patients, which we presented here as a poster, we didn't find for the moment any of the antiretrovirals associated with liver fibrosis progression, but rather what was associated with liver fibrosis progression was the presence of MAFLD, yes versus no, and weight gain. So if a person with HIV was actually gaining weight during the observation period, there was higher probability of having fibrosis progression. But as I said, these data need further clarification and more research because they are not consistent on the effect of antiretrovirals on hepatic steatosis and related fibrosis. So another important point that is actually, is going to be discussed soon by, in another presentation by Dana, is that NAFLD is a sexual dimorphic disease. And this is very important because research has to be made in a different way, in a separate way, between males and females, research related to NASH and to NAFLD. For example, we know that NAFLD generally is more prevalent in men. Also, we know that fibrosis progression in NASH is less fast in women in pre-menopause moment. However, after menopause, there is an acceleration of fibrosis progression in women, and also there is more prevalent of NAFLD. Because we know that in women with HIV, there is, there may be early menopause, there may be alteration of the hormonal, of the, of the sexual hormones. Obviously, we need dedicated research in women with HIV targeting, targeting liver disease. So how we do the diagnosis of NASH? NASH remains a histologic diagnosis. So theoretically, the only way to diagnose NASH is to do a liver biopsy. Obviously, this is impossible and unfeasible in clinical practice because when we know that 25% of the Canadian population have NAFLD and 35% of the people living with HIV have NAFLD, it is unfeasible and unrealistic to consider doing liver biopsy to all these, these people to diagnose NASH. We cannot diagnose NASH non-invasively. However, we can diagnose two of the main characteristics of the definition of NASH, which include hepatic steatosis and liver fibrosis. And I would like to stress that liver fibrosis is the most important predictor of a liver outcome. So the stage of liver fibrosis in NAFLD is the most important clinical endpoint, is the most important consideration that in clinical practice we need to try to achieve. And we do have non-invasive tests to diagnose and to stage liver fibrosis. For example, the most used in clinical practice, in the practice of HIV medicine and the practice of hepatology, is the FIB4. The FIB4 is a combination of age, platelets, AST and ALT, so it's a very simple biomarker. If the FIB4 is less than 1.30, the negative predictive value to rule out advanced liver fibrosis is actually 95%. So with a simple biomarker that you can calculate online through very standard parameters that regularly are asked for in the, in the practice of HIV medicine, you can actually be almost sure that a patient doesn't have advanced liver fibrosis. We also have the fibroscan, it's not available in all the clinics, but usually, it can also, it is also validated nicely in people with HIV. So both the FIB4 and the fibroscan are very good non-invasive tools to stage liver fibrosis in people living with HIV. If we look through the fibroscan, what is the prevalence of NAFLD in different countries? So because the prevalence really can be variable across countries, geographical area because of ethnicity, because of life habits, you see that interestingly, the prevalence of NAFLD, it's quite consistent in Thailand, in Brazil, in Canada, in Germany. But the only study that was conducted in Africa thus far found a much, much lower prevalence of NAFLD. So obviously, this is related to totally different economic, social economic situation, obviously. So it's very important to do dedicated studies in NAFLD across different geographical areas in people with HIV. And the same studies looked at the cofactors associated with NAFLD in the setting of HIV infection. And I would like to stress that the most reported cofactor associated with NAFLD was elevated BMI. So again, the importance of, of metabolic factor, also diabetes, you see there, while HIV-related factor, we don't have enough data so far to understand which of these HIV-related factor can be associated with NAFLD. However, as we said, we have some idea, for example, in terms of maybe some are antiretrovirals, but we need more research. On the topic of BMI, we actually conducted a multi-center study and we found that it is important to be reminded in clinical practice that even if a person living with HIV has normal BMI, it can still have NAFLD. And Felice will actually speak later about that in the other presentation later on. So even if a person with HIV has nor, although BMI is the main risk factor for NAFLD, even in those with normal BMI, you can actually find NAFLD. You can see, for example, in this slide, that those with lean NAFLD, defined as a NAFLD in a patient with a BMI less than 25, still had the same, or almost the same amount of liver fibrosis compared to patients with overweight. And importantly, and this is a general concept around NAFLD, NAFLD is an extra, is, is considered really an extrapatic disease. So it's a multi-system disease which may affect many organs. And in this data, we showed that this is the same also in people with HIV. If those persons who don't have, for example, diabetes or dyslipidemia as baseline, if they are followed longitudinally, we actually found that those with NAFLD have a higher incidence of both diabetes and dyslipidemia. So it's very important to be reminded that patients living with HIV and with NAFLD are at higher risk not only of fibrosis, but also of other extrapatic comorbidities. And same concept, we also found that people with HIV and with NAFLD have a higher prevalence of IASCVD risk, risk calculator. This is the calculator that is used to predict the 10 years' risk of having a major myocardial event. So people living with HIV, if they have NAFLD, have actually a higher risk of developing cardiovascular disease in the future. And this is particularly relevant because the European guidelines for the study of the liver and also the American, they state that any patient with NAFLD should be really risk stratified for cardiovascular events. So this is the algorithm of AAX that we recently proposed to risk stratify patients living with HIV for NAFLD. So if a person living with HIV has any among metabolic comorbidity, chronic elevation of liver transaminases or post-exposure to the drugs, it is important to do a case finding for liver fibrosis. So any patient with this characteristic should have at least one test for liver fibrosis, which can be a FIB4, very simple in clinical practice. If the FIB4 is actually not less than 1.30, so you cannot reliably exclude the presence of advanced fibrosis. So you have to do a fibroscan, so you have to refer to the gastroenterology, pathology, and then for further link to care and management of liver fibrosis. What about management of NAFLD in people with HIV? The management is quite similar of the general NAFLD with some differences. In the AAX guidelines, we stated that the cornerstone is lifestyle modification and weight loss. Proven efficacy in pharmacotherapy are pyoglitazone, vitamin E and tesamorelin. And also, you can consider bariatric surgery in those who are eligible. In the management of HIV, it is important to avoid the drugs in people who are at risk who have NAFLD and consider lipiddeuterregimens as per guidelines. So here is quick overview on the no pharmacological approaches. One is weight loss. Important to stress to the patient that if he has NAFLD and he loses weight, actually, the weight loss can regress fibrosis and even cirrhosis. We know that if a patient loses more than 10% of his body weight, it will actually regress fibrosis. So this is very important to stress with the person. Exercise, important, recommended 150 to 200 minutes per week of moderate aerobic exercise and bariatric surgery for those who are eligible. The role of nutrients is also very important. And in fact, we know, for example, that Mediterranean diet is recommended in people living with HIV and with NAFLD. And for example, we know that other foods are to be avoided, like red meat, like sucrose drinks and so on. And this is, this very nice study actually was also shown that dietary intake of fats and fatty acids assessed by a dietary recourse found that dietary fatty acid intake is associated with NAFLD specific, and liver fibrosis specifically in fact, in the setting of people living with HIV. Telemedicine, very nice studies from Portugal, found that if you actually use a telemedicine dedicated tool for diuretic invention, you can actually reduce steatosis and weight in people with HIV and with NAFLD. A few words on the pharmacotherapy that is available nowadays. So we know vitamin E, pyoglitazone and also tesamorelin are actually recommended by the AAX guidelines in people with HIV. Unfortunately, there are no data instead regarding the use of, of new medications in people living with HIV. Tesamorelin has been shown to reduce both steatosis and also fibrosis, halt fibrosis progression. In this study that we conducted at MUHC, we actually found that the use of vitamin E 24 weeks can reduce both steatosis and also liver transaminases. And this was really a very strong effect, as you can see here, in people with HIV and NASH. And finally, pyoglitazone in this study showed also to reduce hepatic steatosis and glycemia in people with HIV and NAFLD. So in general, I think that it's very important as an HIV association to advocate for the inclusion of people with HIV in ongoing global clinical trials for NASH because currently, people with HIV are actually excluded, although they are at high risk for NAFLD and they have more fibrosis, they are excluded from global clinical trials because they are too complicated to manage, to manage. So as an association, as a society, we are advocating for that and we published a paper on hepatology advocating for the inclusion of people with HIV in ongoing clinical trials for NASH. So in summary, NAFLD is the most common liver disease in people with HIV. In HIV, NAFLD is more severe with high prevalence of liver fibrosis and can increase risk of cardiovascular and metabolic conditions. Main cofactors of NAFLD and fibrosis seem overweight and type 2 diabetes. However, more research is needed on the, on the role of antiretroviral regimens. Case finding of liver fibrosis is recommended in all people with HIV who have specific risk factor characteristics. Treatment for NAFLD includes lifestyle modifications and a few pharmacotherapy options. It is essential to include and to advocate for people living with HIV to be included in global trials for new anti-fibrotic molecules for NASH. So I would like, grazie, to thank you very much, merci beaucoup for your attention.
Thank you so much, Giada. So we will take all the questions at the end. So now I will invite Dr. Felice Chinkwe, who's now doing a year research fellowship at McGill University, but who's a physician in fourth year of internal medicine at University of Milan. He will present on hepatic steatosis in people with HIV. It's an abstract, hepatic steatosis in people with HIV is associated with lower BMI and more liver fibrosis compared to metabolic dysfunction-associated fatty liver disease.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Felice, I come from Italy and I'm here for one-year research fellowship. I wanted to thank the organizer for inviting me and also for this very nice and friendly congress and really enjoying it. So the study I'm going to present is entitled Hepatic Steatosis in People with HIV is Associated with Lower BMI and More Liver Fibrosis Compared to Metabolic Dysfunction Associated Fatty Liver Disease. I have nothing to disclose. So a little bit of background that we already heard. NAFLD is defined as the presence of fatty liver in more than 5% of liver cells. Interestingly, NAFLD is more frequent and more severe in the setting of HIV. As we can see, the prevalence is up to 40% in people with HIV and the prevalence of NASH and NASH fibrosis is more than twice that of the general population. This reflects the very complex pathogenesis of NAFLD in people with HIV. HIV patients not only have more frequent classical risk factors such as metabolic conditions and bad lifestyle habits, but also unique HIV factors such as HIV direct effect and low-lasting use of antiretroviral therapy. In 2020, a panel of experts wanted to change the term NAFLD into MAFLD, which is metabolic dysfunction-associated fatty liver disease. In fact, they thought that MAFLD is a standalone disease rather than being a known disease. And therefore, it deserved a positive rather than a negative definition. MAFLD is established by the presence of hepatic steatosis plus metabolic abnormalities such as overweight, obesity or diabetes or more than two metabolic abnormalities. The strong points of these definitions are the emphasis on the mutual relationship between liver, fatty liver and metabolic condition. It also gives a better risk stratification of patients with a better characterization of the lean ones. And as we said before, viral hepatitis, also alcohol intake are not excluded from the definition, which is very important because they are very common conditions. So there are many studies that show a higher prevalence of NAFLD and NAFLD fibrosis in patient with HIV, but still little is known how this new definition is going to change the scenario. Therefore, we wanted to compare severity of metabolic dysfunction and liver disease between HIV patients with fatty liver and MAFLD patients. This is a multi-centric case control study. We enrolled 424 patients. They had a diagnosis of fatty liver defined as controlled attenuation parameter at transient elastography at fibroscan more than 248 decibel per meter. In particular, we included 212 patients with HIV in Montreal and we compared them with the same age and sex matched group in Milan. For all patients, we assessed prevalence of metabolic comorbidities, lifestyle habits, laboratory data, fibroscan. And for the HIV cohort, we also collected some HIV-related variables. Our outcomes were the prevalence of metabolic dysfunction and liver disease, especially liver fibrosis, because it's the main driver of mortality, as Dr. Sebastiani said. So here are the results. As we can see from the table, most of the patients were male and we can see that the Montreal cohort was much more diverse than the Milan cohort. Interestingly, people with HIV and fatty liver had lower BMI and lower prevalence of obesity compared to MAFLD patients. They also had a higher prevalence of significant alcohol intake. Moving to the metabolic comorbidities, we can see that HIV patients had lower prevalence of hypertension, but they showed a higher prevalence of dyslipidemia, high triglycerides and low HDL cholesterol. No difference was shown in diabetes and cardiovascular events. Fine, as for liver features, we can see that HIV patients had lower mean cap values with a lower prevalence of severe hepatic steatosis, but interestingly, they showed a even more severe liver disease with higher prevalence of significant liver fibrosis and increased liver transaminases. When we did the multivariable logistic regression analysis, HIV infection remained an independent factor associated with significant liver fibrosis, even when we adjusted for other confounders like age, prevalence of metabolic comorbidities and also severe steatosis. Then we saw, we showed a high prevalence of significant liver fibrosis in our cohort, 24%. And we also wanted to investigate which were the factors associated with liver fibrosis among patients with HIV and fatty liver. And as we can see, it was less frequent in black people, while it was more frequent in people with metabolic comorbidities such as diabetes, hypertension, obesity. And as for HIV features, the only feature that was associated to significant liver fibrosis was longer HIV duration of infection. So limitations of the study. Of course, this is a retrospective study, but we are already enrolling patients in our multi-centric cohort of patients with HIV and fatty liver, the CTN 326. The other limitation is lack of information of diet and physical activity, which are very important because they are associated with liver fibrosis and poor outcomes in MAFLD patients. Finally, the heterogeneity of the cohorts. So we are comparing the Montreal cohort with Milan cohort, which is very different geographically and ethnically. and ethnically. In conclusion, we show that despite a lower BMI and lower prevalence of severe hepatic steatosis, HIV patients with fatty liver showed a higher heterogenic profile and also more severe liver disease compared to Mafaldy patients. HIV infection is an independent factor associated with significant liver fibrosis. And significant liver fibrosis is less common in black patient and more common in patient with metabolic comorbidities and longer HIV infection. Finally, we want to stress how important is it to screen and follow up for hepatic steatosis HIV patients, also the lean ones. I wanted to thank my group here in Montreal and also those back in Italy. And thank you all for your attention.
So we will be following with the third presentation for this session. The third speaker is Diana Cablari. Diana Cablari is affiliated to McGill University and she will be speaking on sex differences in the association of HIV with metabolic dysfunction associated fatty liver disease. Please, Diana, the floor is yours.
Hi, everyone. My name is Donna. I'm an incoming resident in internal medicine at McGill University. I just wanted to thank the organizers for inviting me to speak here today. And the study that I'll be talking to you about today is titled Sex Differences in the Association of HIV with Metabolic Fatty Liver Disease. So as we heard earlier today, metabolic dysfunction associated fatty liver, or Mafald, is a novel concept that was proposed in 2020, aiming to replace the term non-alcoholic fatty liver disease. Importantly, Mafald does not require the exclusion of other etiologies of liver disease such as excessive alcohol intake or viral hepatitis. Instead, it's diagnosed in the presence of hepatic steatosis in addition to any of the following three metabolic conditions, including obesity, diabetes, or evidence of other metabolic dysregulation. And this novel concept has allowed clinicians to identify more patients at risk of adverse outcomes. In terms of the reported global incidence of Mafald, it varies quite a bit from 6 to 35%. In Canada, the estimated incidence is about 21%, but it's expected to increase dramatically by 20% by 2030. And so Mafald also appears to be a sexually dimorphic disease. And we know in the adult population, the prevalence of Mafald is higher in men compared to women, compared to pre-menopausal women, but this trend seems to start to reverse with the largest difference being at around 55 to 60 years of age, where we start to see a higher prevalence of Mafald in post-menopausal women compared to their male counterparts. And so this stark increase and reversal of the trend seems to suggest a possible underlying role of sex hormones in the development of the disease. And so what we do know is that the development of Mafald is strongly tied and correlated to abnormal lipid and glucose metabolism. And there's a growing body of evidence that suggests, seems to suggest that liver metabolism in itself is also affected quite a bit by sex hormone levels. In fact, there have been several studies that showed that in Mafald is a global decrease in both androgen and estrogen levels. And individuals with lower levels of these sex hormones are not only at higher risk of developing Mafald, but also go on to develop more severe stages of liver fibrosis. And in terms of understanding some of the underlying molecular mechanisms that are contributing, they're not quite fully elucidated, but there seems to be a role of both estrogen and androgens in the development and progression of liver fibrosis. In particular, estrogen seems to be playing a more protective role in the fat accumulation in the liver through things like increasing level of lipolysis, reducing de novo lipogenesis, and also promoting the balance of hepatic cholesterol levels as well as increasing glucose tolerance as well as insulin sensitivity. And so in any physiological conditions where there's an abrupt decline in the levels of estrogen, so for instance, in post-menopause, there's women, there seems to be an elevated risk of the development of hepatic steatosis in these patients. And so a recent study that was published in 2021 that really looked at the prevalence of Mafald and dyslipidemia in women based on their menopausal status, found that a decrease in estrogen in both the peri-menopausal and post-menopausal women did result in fat redistribution that also coincided with an increased prevalence of both dyslipidemia in addition to increased prevalence of Mafald in both the peri and the post-menopausal groups of women. So what do we know about Mafald in the HIV population? So we know that patients living with HIV are at higher risk for Mafald. In fact, it's one of the leading causes of non-HIV related mortality. And this is in part because the metabolic risk factors have a higher prevalence in patients with HIV compared to the general population. And both HIV infection itself, but also the antiretroviral therapy have both been implicated as steatogenic factors. There have been some studies that have investigated the burden of hepatic steatosis and fibrosis in patients with HIV. And a recent study in Germany reported a prevalence of Mafald that was about 35.5% in a cohort of about 280 patients, but less is known about the sex differences in both Mafald and liver fibrosis in the setting of HIV infection. So and we set out to investigate both the sex differences and the incidence and prevalence of both Mafald and liver fibrosis in this patient population. So in terms of our study design, this was a multi-center cohort study of consecutive patients with HIV at the McGill University Health Center in Montreal, but in addition to two centers in Italy as well. And we enrolled patients with HIV into a screening program where both Mafald and liver fibrosis were investigated using liver stiffness measurements with associated control attenuation parameter. We defined Mafald as the presence of hepatic steatosis with a CAP score of greater than 270 plus any of the following type 2 diabetes, overweight or obesity, as well as two other metabolic abnormalities. Significant liver fibrosis was diagnosed with a cutoff of greater than eight kilopascals. In terms of our primary outcomes, so we looked at both prevalence and incidence of Mafald as well as significant liver fibrosis. And data was assessed through survival analysis. The patients were followed for a median of 3.5 years. Terms of our population, we had about 1,359 patients with an average age of 51.8. 25% were female and an average BMI of 25.1. We had 25% of our cohort were of black ethnicity and 64% were white. The average HIV duration was 17.2 years. Of note, 70% of our cohort were HIV mono-infected. When we looked at the baseline characteristics of our population, the prevalence of Mafald at baseline was lower in females, 17.7, compared to males, a 24.3. There was no statistical significance in terms of the prevalence of liver fibrosis at baseline between the female and male population, but females with Mafald were more likely to be of black ethnicity, have lower levels of ALT, higher HDL, and lower triglycerides as well. In terms of the incidence of Mafald, those were similar between women and men with HIV. But when we looked at the incidence of significant liver fibrosis, those were higher in women in our cohort compared to men. We had about 485 patients that were followed over the three and a half years. And as you can see, the Kaplan-Meier on the left, women with, living with HIV had higher incidence of significant fibrosis, about a 7.3 versus a 5.9. And this was particularly true after 50 years of age, shown on the Kaplan as well on the right. When we did a multivariable analysis and adjusted for age, both Mafald and female sex were both, were independent predictors of the developing significant liver fibrosis in this patient population. Mafald had an adjusted hazard ratio of about 3.3 and female sex had an adjusted hazard ratio of 2.2. Interestingly, CD4 cell count was found to be a protective factor. So the next aspect of our study was to look to see whether or not we see alterations within the sex hormones in our population. So we stratified our patients, women with HIV that had significant fibrosis with an LSM score of greater than eight compared to those without. So in terms of our preliminary data that we have so far, we do see a trend in terms of women with HIV and fibrosis to be more likely to be menopausal, have elevated levels of both FSH and LH hormones. And interestingly, we, although the numbers are quite, are very small, we looked at women with either a history of breast cancer or exposure to tamoxifen and also found that there seemed to be more women with significant fibrosis that had a positive either breast cancer or tamoxifen use. So what we're currently in the process of doing is expanding this data to some of our other multicenters to see whether or not these trends also hold true and they are, in fact, will be significant across our different centers. So just to conclude, in our study, we find that Mafald does seem to be a sexually dimorphic disease in patients living with HIV and that despite having lower levels of Mafald, women are, with HIV, do have a higher incidence of significant liver fibrosis compared to men. And this is especially true after 50 years of age. And this is particularly important for the early detection of both Mafald as well as appropriate intervention of this particularly high-risk group in order to prevent the progression of metabolic disease as well as the subsequent complications. And so we think, we also believe future studies are warranted to target specifically the sex differences in metabolic fatty liver disease and fill the current gaps that are, that are present. And at this, at this stage of our study, we're also looking to see whether or not we do see differences with either drug exposures or the potential role of viral co-infection as well as alcohol intake in our cohort. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Diana Cablari, for this presentation. Now we move on to our last presentation for this session. The fourth presenter is Dr. Melanie Murray. Dr. Melanie Murray is based at the University of British Columbia. She will be speaking on metabolic complications among Karma participants and more recent data obtained from the BC Karma Chirros Collaboration, BCC Free Study. Dr. Murray, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much and good morning, everybody. Wow, it's bright up here, hey? All right, so let's get started. So I would like to start by respectfully acknowledging the research that I'm about to present today was conducted on the traditional ancestral and unceded territories of the Kosalish peoples. These are my conflicts of interest. And what I'd like to talk about really is women living with HIV and aging today. We know that half of the people living with HIV in the world today are women, or a little better, and that in Canada, 29% of new diagnoses for HIV are among women. With antiretroviral therapy, all persons living with HIV when they have access are living longer and living into older age, which is wonderful, but that means that they are now coming up with additional concurrent illnesses that they have to deal with as they age. Yet only 8% or so of HIV research that is in the literature today is published in women. And if you take out pregnancy and breastfeeding and that sort of thing, it's actually closer to 2% of research is among women in particular. So there's a real need for women-specific research, as we've seen with some of the presentations So the Karma Study is the children and women antiretrovirals, antiretroviral therapy and markers of aging study. And it studied aging in women living with HIV and negative control women from a cellular, molecular, clinical, and hormonal perspective. And data collection took place between 2008 and 2018. There are other branches of Karma which are ongoing with children, but they're not discussed And one of the things that I looked at when I first got involved with the Karma Study, which is headed by Helen Cote, one of my colleagues, was to look at, you know, these concurrent illnesses that women are living with as they age with HIV. Okay? How many are there? Is it different than in the general population or, you know, what's going on? And so looking at baseline data from the Karma Study, we found that women living with HIV in this cross-sectional study were actually a little younger than our negative controls despite our best efforts, at around 40 years of age. Their BMI, 26, so slightly elevated above the normal range, but not too bad at all. And otherwise, women living with HIV in the study, despite our best efforts, did have a little bit more substance use, smoking, lower education, and lower income. Okay? Controlling for all those factors, however, we found that women living with HIV had more concurrent conditions than negative controls all along the age spectrum. And as you can see, women at less than 35, living with HIV, look very similar to those, sorry, women less than 30 look very similar to those 30 to 40 in the negative control group. And every bar seems to be one decade separated from one another. So it looks like women living with HIV have more concurrent conditions and they're occurring about a decade earlier. When we look a little bit deeper into this data, we found that the predicted number of diagnoses by HIV status, income on the left, was significantly associated with increased concurrent conditions. So the lower income groups, those with less access to good food, to exercise, you know, the ability to do these things to take care of their bodies, they were more likely to have more concurrent conditions. And those who used cigarettes, either in the past or current currently, they also had increased risk. This was significantly different among negative women. So control women also saw these things, but the effects of these were very additive for women living with HIV. So very important. We then went on to look at metabolic, metabolic factors among living with HIV in this cohort. And we found, now this was a, the data was based on self-report, blood work data that we did in our study, as well as medication use that could be attributed only to that condition. And we found the prevalence of dyslipidemia among women living with HIV was approximately 60% based on Canadian guidelines. Okay? And that was significantly more than it was in negative controls. You can see the other things there, so metabolic syndrome, hypertension, and diabetes. None of those are significant, but of course, the sample size is not super big. And the factors that were important here were whether women currently smoked or smoked in the past. Okay? And hepatitis C co-infection, as we've actually seen elsewhere in this conference, was also important. Use of alcohol concurrently was actually resulted in less chance of dyslipidemia. Looking at this over time, so this study was presented here this week, looking at concurrent conditions in Karma and their incidence. This is a small preliminary study looking at data from our first and last visit in Karma. And unfortunately, we only had a small number of women who were negative controls, who had two visits. Visits were approximately five years apart for women living with HIV and approximately four years apart for women not living with HIV, but this was controlled for in the analysis. There were the same sociodemographic factors, which were different and were controlled for. But we found that the number of concurrent conditions for women living with HIV was not only higher at both time points, but the rate of incidence, so the rate of accumulation of new concurrent conditions was higher among women living with HIV. So what is happening here? So when we, when we looked into this, we found only these things, so osteoporosis and mental health diagnoses were significantly increased, but again, the sample size is very small. What is happening here? Why are women living with HIV having more concurrent illnesses than those not living with HIV? And so one of the studies we did in Karma was to look at bone mineral density among women living with HIV. And when we did that study, you know, amenorrhea, a history of no periods, okay, in your life, is an important factor in bone density. So that was included in our analysis. But we were pretty strict. So we looked at only those women who had had at least a year in their lives without a period, not for reason of pregnancy, breastfeeding, or any kind of birth control, so for other reasons. And most of these women were having hypothalamic amenorrhea, which is basically hormonal, there is a suppression at the hypothalamus, and so their estrogen and progesterone levels are very low. They're not menopausal, but they have a similar kind of hormone pattern. Okay? And when we looked at our data, we found that the prevalence of this secondary amenorrhea, so this long period of time without periods in this population of women before menopause, was 21% among women living with HIV in our study versus 9% among women not living with HIV in our study. To give you an idea, the general population, this history would be 3 or 4%. Huge, right? One-fifth of our women don't have periods for more than a year for not a good reason. And this was associated actually with And this was associated actually with lower bone density at the hips. So women living with HIV had lower bone density than their negative controls counterparts. But if you added on this history of amenorrhea, it was an additional factor, significantly lower bone density. And that was after controlling for things like tenofavir use and vitamin D intake. So what is going on here? So we noted these women are missing hormones for parts of their lives. And we know, as we've heard already today, that estrogen is very protective for the liver, but it's also protective against renal disease, cardiovascular disease, including, you know, heart disease, stroke, is protective against the bones, is protective event, protective against cognitive decline. So it's, it's very protective for women. Okay? So we know women are more likely to have amenorrhea. Some studies suggest they also have earlier menopause, okay, maybe by a year or so. Is this what is going on? And so with this in mind and some other questions, of course, as well, Karma partnered with the Chivos Study, which is the Canadian HIV Women Sexual Reproductive Health Cohort Study, to make a new study, the British Columbia Karma Chivos Collaboration. And this is a CHRCTN funded study that uses a community-based, self to society approach to understanding healthy aging among women. And it's a prospective cohort study where we include women living with HIV and well matched controls. So we're trying very hard to match our controls the best we can in, in British Columbia. And data collection started in 2020, and we've recruited approximately 530 of our 700 women. Study visits, this is for women 16 and older, cis or transgender women, able to provide consent in England, in English, and either present at our clinic or at one of the remote site visits that we've arranged. And the clinical visit has, you can see here, there's some measurements, there's some blood work, there are some swabs, a hair sample for cortisol level. And then there's a community visit, which is separate, which has a number of different social structural questionnaires embedded. And we're also collecting data on self-reported concurrent conditions in British, in the BCC three cohort. There are 41 physical diagnoses and that we're collecting data on 35, 36 of those are chronic conditions, as well as 13 mental health diagnoses. All right. And so these are some of the results that were presented here at the conference so far this week. They're preliminary, based on not the full cohort, but some. And so this is just based on self-report among 157 women living with HIV and 237 controls. Despite our best efforts, there are still some differences in socio demographic factors between our groups. But as you can see, levels of employment, safety, stable housing situations are very similar. We are collecting or trying to recruit women from the similar places that our HIV positive women are being recruited from. Despite our best efforts, women living with HIV are still a little bit older, but we're working on that. But that's controlled for. All right. And just to look at our, our baseline data for this study, women living with HIV in Canada, or at least in our cohort, do face multiple barriers to good health, and these are things that we need to work on. So when we look at self-reported prevalence of physical comorbidities or concurrent conditions, hormonal and reproductive health that women talk about is actually pretty similar. There's no differences. The only difference, when you look at bone, liver, lung, and kidney health, that people report is in osteoporosis, and this is with a banforoni correction. There are fairly high rates of kidney disease, cirrhosis, COPD, and other, other concurrent conditions among women. Okay, GI and ophthalmologic, so insomnia, probably due to our integrase inhibitors, I'm afraid. Neuropathy, more common, but they fall out after we do a correction for multiple comparisons. When we look at cardiovascular health, okay, hypertension is not much different in our pretty well matched cohort. High cholesterol by self-report is not much different. And you see that this percentage is much lower than I presented earlier. And this is because people don't identify that they have these conditions. They don't know. Maybe they're not tested. Maybe they're not told, right? But still, the rates are fairly high, but similar. Substance use disorder is more common, unfortunately, though this does. And, and that is a risk factor for women living with HIV, unfortunately. When we look at measurement of concurrent conditions in BCC three, we are now moving on to looking at, doing the conglomerate of self-report with using definitions from our blood work. And you can see some of the things that we are going to employ here. And we're going to compare the self-report versus scores based on blood work that we've done, et cetera. Okay? Medications that people are taking. And some of the things that we're looking at is the kidney failure risk equation, the FIB four score, looking at dyslipidemia based on Canadian guidelines, as well as some of our measures that we have in the, in the questionnaires. All right. So looking at some of the hormones, we are measuring multiple hormones among women living with HIV in the study, including estrogen, progesterone, estrone in women who are post-menopausal, because that is the primary estrogen in women who are post-menopausal. And that is all coming, but we're waiting on getting the numbers for that. We have quite a few women already who are living with HIV that we've done the testosterone levels on. And what we found from our early data is that testosterone levels are lower among women living with HIV than controls. All right? And that the main factors associated with this, with lower testosterone levels are age. So in women, as well as in men, testosterone levels decrease with age, and also past substance use affects that. Those, sorry, I'm, I'm wrong. The variables associated with number of comorbidities, past substance use, and age. Variables associated with testosterone levels do include HIV status, age, so with increasing age, they fall, as well as a lifetime history of hepatitis C virus. But there was no, there was no increase in number of concurrent illnesses with lower testosterone among women. We also looked at cortisol using hair cortisol specimens, so three centimeters of hair from the scalp. Okay? So the first three centimeters attached to the scalp. And this was looked at via ELISA. And we looked at a number of concurrent illnesses, including depression, cardiovascular disease, metabolic disease, liver disease, and kidney disease, based on a conglomeration of self-report risk scores previously shown and medications, to see if there was an association with cortisol level and these things which are found in the literature to be linked. Okay? And we found that though women in our cohort at this snapshot were slightly older, if they were living with HIV, they were otherwise fairly similar. They were more likely to be smokers or past substance users or ever to have had hepatitis C. And they were found to have, if you were living with HIV, lower cortisol levels and a higher risk of concurrent substance use. HIV status associated with lower cortisol levels, but lower cortisol levels in this study was not associated with increased concurrent illnesses. So what does it all mean? Well, I don't know, but we're looking forward to seeing what our estrogen and our progesterone show us. There is some evidence that HIV affects signaling in the hypothalamus and decreases hormone levels overall. And that may be what we're seeing with women with their lower cortisol levels, their lower testosterone levels, even though we don't see it with particular concurrent illnesses. We may find that this overall decrease in many of our steroid hormones in our bodies is partially responsible for some of the concurrent illnesses that we're seeing among women living with HIV. And it begs the question, for men, testosterone, is that doing the same thing? So future studies, female sex hormones, we're all going to, also going to look at inflammation, social structural factors, and then we're going to put it all together in a large structural equation model. I'd like to acknowledge my team, who've done a lot of this work. And go on to questions.
Thank you. I was keeping the seat for you. Thank you. So we are now ready for question after this very interesting talk. Thank you very much. Is there any question from the room? If not, I would have a question or while people are thinking about their question. So one challenge I find with motivating patients is often, you know, well, it is motivating patient the challenge, but I, I find it's easier when you have a target to work towards. So when we talk about fatty liver, and I'm gonna like open the, like, the question to everyone, although when we talk about like the, the Mafold, is there a clinical target once we start a treatment? Do we aim for halting progression? Do we actually hope for regression? Should we have a target follow-up to encourage the patient on the benefit? Or should we have a, a point where we say, okay, we need, we should add an additional treatment?
Yeah, so this is, I can, I can take the question if it's okay. So it's, it's a very good question, because I think it's very important to, to set goals for the patients, which feasible goals. So first of all, the cornerstone for the treatment is lifestyle modification. So if a patient has already liver fibrosis, weight loss, it's very important to stress to the patient that weight loss is not going to improve just steatosis, but also is going to improve fibrosis. And this is actually a very good kind of incentive for the patient. In terms of which kind of, beyond lifestyle modification, which has to be, you know, in a, in a medium, long term of obviously goal for the patient, beyond that, it's a very good question on which other approaches we should use. Pharmacological treatments, according to the guidelines, the ones that we have for, in general, for Mafold, Mafold, there are very few. And in people with HIV, there have actually not been a lot of studies, but they include vitamin E, thiazamorelin, and, and pyroglycerin, the ones that have been studied. But according to the guidelines, only patients who have either NASH with some inflammation elevated, transaminases, or those with some fibrosis, should actually be considered for pharmacological treatment. So basically, those who have fibrosis, let's say you do the FIB four in, in your patients, you find that the FIB four is more than 1.30. So you do a fiber scan and you see the fiber scan is elevated, these are patients in which you may want to consider pharmacotherapy and referral, you know, for, for pharmacotherapy. But as a baseline underline, there should always be the lifestyle modification with the target that, that we discussed before. Yeah. I don't know if there is anyone else who wants to add something, but this is general in terms of guidelines. Yeah.
Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
What about new drugs like Ozempic for weight loss? Are they having any effect on?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, actually. So in the general Mafold, there are several ongoing clinical trials looking at the effect of Ozempic specifically on NASH, there are global clinical trials. So we know that actually, we already know that Ozempic, even in non-diabetic patients, actually achieves very significant weight losses, you know, for the step one, for example, 16% weight loss. So for me, as a pathologist, this is very, very relevant, because as we said, the weight loss actually will mean regression of liver fibrosis. As of now, the, we don't have the final result of the phase three semaglutide for patients with NASH. However, in the phase two, there was already a very interesting signal that the use of Ozempic can actually improve NASH. So now the guidelines, so the answer is yes, we are pretty sure this is going to be probably a backbone for future NASH targeted therapy. But as of now, they are not yet recommended by guidelines, because we're waiting for the final result of the phase three. Guidelines of liver society currently state farther data are needed, but you can consider, you know, GLP-1 receptor agonist in patients with, with diabetes and for a need for weight loss. This is what is stated and out. But I think the future is there. We need dedicated studies in people with HIV. I, I spoke actually to those who are involved with Ozempic, and for the moment, there is no interest because of what we speak, the, the population is felt to have, be more complicated for clinical trials. But I think this has to be targeted, because these are people who are at higher risk for NASH and fibrosis.
Thank you.
Well, thank you to all the speakers for the great, great talks. I have a question for Dr. Murray, actually. As you know, in clinical practice, fatigue is like a really common symptom all clinicians get. Do you think it's worthwhile that we routinely do a cortisol screen in our patients when they're presenting with fatigue, but say no other clear sign of, you know, cortisol deficiency? Like, is that something, given their HIV and other risks, we should be looking at? I guess that's part one of the question. Then part two is, I noticed, you know, during COVID, I had a few cases, not just in people with HIV, but, you know, they were given doses of prednisone for like five days for respiratory exacerbations and things. And in a few rare cases, they did have some problems later with, you know, like, with kind of some signs that you could suggest were like, almost like adrenal insufficiency from the, from the steroid withdrawal? And I'm just wondering if you could comment on those two things?
So personally, I don't do it very often, but if someone has, you know, kind of overwhelming fatigue, and particularly if they, you know, if they have dizziness and whatnot as well, you know, then I will sometimes order it, particularly after I've ordered the usual suspects, right? I start with iron and B12 and thyroid hormone, right? So if I've done all of that workup and I can't find it in patients that kind of look like it might be possible, I sometimes order a AM cortisol. It's, it's hard to know, like, you occasionally find someone who is truly deficient, but, but I don't think it's, it's very common.
So it's still pretty far from being on our list of kind of routine things we would screen for, even with HIV.
Yeah, it's not in my, it's not high on my list. It's something I would do further down. But, but I think it is interesting to see that when you look at these average cortisol levels in their hair over several months, they are on average significantly lower. And I suspect that many of the hormones are.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Washington, you have a question? Go ahead.
Thank you all for your great talks. Maybe a question for Dana. The cutoff of 270 for, for the cap, is it an established cutoff in this population? Or is it some cutoff that you chose?
Yeah, so it's a cutoff. It is one of the recommendations by the European Association for the Study of Liver Disease. And there was a recent meta-analysis that was published that showed that cutoff of greater than 270 has a very high sensitivity and specificity for a diagnosis of hepatic steatosis. So that was the cutoff, that was one of the reasons rationale for using that cutoff in our study.
So it's likely a cutoff that will be used in other studies, looking at, looking at the same.
Yeah.
Okay. And maybe just one other thing regarding Mafold, you know, you, we say that we have to have at least two metabolic factors in association, or, or two metabolic factors, but one of these is HOMA IR, another one is CRP. These are not tests that I usually do in my clinics. So maybe the question is, I don't know, Dana Felice or Giada, is it something that you would do in your regular practice that you would suggest we add?
Yeah, so the metabolic dysregulation cutoff criteria for Mafold is specifically for, I think, for patients that are lean and are not overweight or obese. So I guess for patients where you're suspecting metabolic dysfunction, liver disease, but may not fit the other criteria, that may not have diabetes or overweight, then you would, you would want to do further investigation and send something like a high sensitivity CRP in addition to some of the other metabolic panel that you would send off as well.
I think it's a very good answer, this one. I think, because we don't do CRP and insulin in regular practice. And we were speaking, actually, in our pathology practice, if we should add, but this is a very good answer. I think those patients, because these are specifically for the lean category of Mafold, probably when there is, when you have a lean patient, then if you want, and you're suspecting Mafold, then in this targeted population, it may be worthwhile to do it. Thank you.
Maybe one last question, we want in guard of time. I have a question to Dr. Giada. And we know that when we had the pandemic, COVID-19, cardiovascular diseases were one of the main factor of susceptibility to complication, to, to COVID-19. So what happened with Mafold? Do you have seen those women or patient, HIV patient who were affected by Mafold, to be affected by COVID-19?
Yes, actually, this is, this is a very good question. During the pandemic, we actually saw that patients with, who had the NASH. During the pandemic, we actually saw that patients with, who had MAFLD, they were actually at higher risk for severe COVID, independently of the classical metabolic risk factors, including diabetes and obesity. That was really one of the independent risk factors for, to have severe COVID-19 infection. So obviously, this also happened for cirrhosis, we found with cirrhosis, but this is kind of, of intuitive, because these are patients who have advanced liver disease. But we also, there were several studies reporting that even MAFLD without cirrhosis was an independent risk factor. So we think that because MAFLD is a systemic, systemic disease, not affecting also the liver, we think that this may actually be a kind of interfacing with the immune system, with the chronic inflammation and all the cytokine, kind of pattern that comes with MAFLD. It's an excellent question.
So maybe to conclude this session, one last comment from Felice. What would be your last statement on next step or to help awareness or implementation of like integrating and thinking about MAFLD?
Well, as we saw from all these presentations, in HIV patients, metabolic comorbidities and liver disease are very frequent. And since we're anti-retroviral therapy now, life for these patients is getting longer and longer, we really want to, to screen them for all the other complication, and we should think about MAFLD for sure.
Thank you. So we, we really thank you all for your assistance here in this early morning, on a Sunday morning. And this will close our session. And I want to, special thanks to our presenters who did fabulous presentation this morning. Thank you so much.